Great. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, March 27 Bennington Select Board meeting. We are in the Bad News, Huntington Fire Department Facility, and it's nice to see all of you here. I am Jeanne Jenkins, and I have the pleasure of chairing this board, and I'm going to ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey. Thanks for coming.
Hi, Tom Haley. Nice to see everyone.
Good evening, Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Jean Conroy.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Good evening, Bruce Lee Clark.
Wonderful. And also with us here tonight, we have our new managers, Super. We have Nancy White, who protects excellent amendments for us, and we have Josh Boucher on the cat TV camera, which we very much appreciate. So, to begin this evening, I have two reminders. So, this is a large room, and even though we took down the curtains and put up sound boards, which is supposed to help the sound, it has not solved our sound problem. So if you have any difficulty hearing, please sit on the front row, because the ability to hear definitely is better up front than towards the back, all right? So please do that. And then, just in case anyone that's here for Chelsea Solar, that discussion is not happening tonight, all right? If we're going to postpone the request to develop her, it's okay, all right? So with that, let's begin. Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance to?
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag, in the light of the shades of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Jean. Now, Jean, would you read our vision statement and guide style of work?
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
All right. So on to the consent agenda, which are the minutes of March 27, warrants and liquor licenses for the purposes of discussion. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Excellent. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Since the minutes of March 27, but isn't it the minutes of?
It would be the next minute.
No.
You're right. It would be the minutes of March 13. Good catch!
Well done. That was just a trick to see who was paying attention.
And Karen, you're the only one that got it.
Very good.
That was a test.
All right. Would that change? Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of March 13, the warrants and license, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any additions? No. Okay, perfect. So, we're moving right along. Next up is proclamation for Bennington Career Month, and I believe we have Wendy Morse and Bill Colick? Yes, please.
So thank you for having us this evening. For those of you that don't know, I'm just going to give you a little bit of background of what April Career Month is before we read the proclamation. So April Career Month started about 11 or 12 years ago now, and it originally started as April Career Week. And there's a group called the Bennington County Workforce and Ed Group, which is, consists of a lot of members from the community, people from education, from government, from the town, from organizations, that all get together once a month and discuss the workforce challenges that the Bennington, in Grid or Bennington area, face. So about 11 or 12 years ago, April Career Week was born, and it was a way to celebrate career awareness for K through adults, largely in Bennington. The first year we did it, we found that we had a really hard time squeezing all these really cool events into one week. And so, as the years came, we decided to expand it to April Career Month. And this has been going on ever since, with the exception of COVID. We had a slight pause during COVID, and this is our first return back in a post-COVID world. So really excited that April Career Month is here now. We have a lot of events that will be planned throughout the month of April, and those events do start at the elementary school level and will expand right on up through adults. And they do cover residents in all of Bennington County, but particularly schools here in Bennington as well. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Just for a second. So, the Workforce and Ed Committee is roughly under the auspices of the Bennington County Regional Commission. It is one of our several committees that BRCRC has and far and away our most active. And as Wendy noted, we started Career Week in 2013, expanded it to two weeks in 2016, and then moved to Career Month in 2017. And throughout that time, and really, the Bennington Banner has been a fabulous partner with us in getting the word out about the events that span now the month. And I especially want to thank Jeanne Jenkins and Wendy Morse, who have co-chaired this committee since I've been involved in 2012 and since the creation of Career Week. They put in countless hours in organizing this committee, which is really this fabulous group that comes together every month just to find out what has to be done and then goes out and does it, and really operates exactly as the committee should. And our thanks to Jeanne and to Wendy for their leadership.
Thank you. So without further ado, I'd like to read the proclamation. So whereas Bennington County Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders, a robust, grassroots, community-based collaborative, inclusive of members from community organizations, institutions, and employers, and whereas Bennington County, consistent with the state of Vermont as a whole, faces workforce challenges that includes but is not limited to current and forecasted labor shortages, declining labor force participation rates, and misconceptions of local job and career pathway opportunities, and whereas Bennington County Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders are instrumental in effectively collaborating on resolving workforce challenges, one project at a time, and whereas Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders develop specialized K-through-adult continuum of career pathway exploration projects that help raise awareness of opportunities improving current and future talent pipelines in relation to engagement with the local economies, and whereas Workforce and Education Committee stakeholders remain keenly in tune with project impact evaluation, trends, opportunities, and challenges within the local workforce economy, and whereas the month of April is Bennington Career Month, a culmination of events and activities in Bennington County that celebrates career pathway awareness at every level and recognizes the positive impact collaborative workforce development has on labor force, employers, and the Bennington County economy, and now therefore be it resolved that we, the Bennington Select Board, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Bennington Career Month, dated at Bennington, Vermont, this 27th day of March 2023.
Thank you very, very much. And we have copied that, but it's completely silent, which is not going on with a beautiful star. It's supposed to be a little bit.
Oh, we have to do it again?
We need to send that on the ground.
I know. I'm sending it down to you, and we're going to do this. So guys, stick around for a minute, and we will be able to review the proclamation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can I just make one comment?
Yes, please.
I just want people to realize, there are 17 events during this Career Month, so that is no small task. So I just wanted people to have a sense of the variety and the magnitude of work that is done. Thank you.
All right. And while we are getting the real proclamation signed, sorry about that, let's begin the public comment, okay? So first up, we have Kelly Carroll, talk about VFW murder mysteries. Can I?
Hi, Kelly Carroll from Bennington. I just wanted to let everybody know that on Friday night, March 31st, the VFW Post-1332 Riders will be hosting a Mardi Gras-themed murder mystery party to benefit Vermont Paws and Boots. And for those of you that don't know about Vermont Paws and Boots, it's a fantastic organization that trains service dogs for veterans and first responders. So it is a murder mystery themed, Mardi Gras themed Fat Tuesday's Pub. The event is actually called Bumped Off on Bourbon Street: A Murder at Fat Tuesday's Pub. So Fat Tuesday's Pub is going to open at 5:00 for guest registration and photographs. The game will start at 6:00. It's three rounds. The first round, people get a card on their character if they choose to. Tickets are $20. When you sign up for a ticket, which are selling fast, we're almost sold out, you choose whether or not you want to be a guest or a character. If you choose to be a character, you're going to get three envelopes throughout the evening. Round one is an introduction to your character with some clues to reveal or, and clues to conceal. So it might be just a couple of hints about your character. Maybe one of the clues I have to say is that you and I owe the same bookie $25,000, and sorry if the content isn't appropriate. And maybe one of my clues to reveal is that I don't gamble at all. So that's round one. Round two is pre-murder and post-murder clues, and at that point, the guest who is the victim will find out that they're the victim. And then round three is the solution, round where the murderer is identified, and again, that person does not know that they are until they go through that. So it's a great opportunity to raise money, something a little bit different, and it is for Vermont Paws and Boots. So tickets can be purchased at the VFW, 137 North Street in Bennington. Thank you.
So next up is Debbie Matt, Gretchen from last meeting.
At the last meeting, I mentioned how the bathrooms had been removed from the senior center area at the new location at the Ben High. Dan Monks got up and said that I was misinformed, that the bathroom had not been removed. I spoke with Jonah, and he said the bathroom had not been removed. And I spoke with Zach, and Zach said the bathroom is now put back. So Zach is aware that the bathroom got pulled from the senior center. And not only did it get moved from here, it got moved to the other end of the building. So I just want to, on record, that the information I did have was correct, and because somebody had said something, the bathroom got put back. It's not where it was, where I would like it to be, but it is back in the senior center.
Thank you very much. It's actually not accurate, but. And next up is Nancy White with the public service announcement.
Over the past month, I've been contacted by several Bennington residents seeking more information and details about projects, programs, and plans going on for Bennington that I've talked about at public meetings that officials don't want to talk about. As a result, I'm going to be holding a public meeting at the Bennington Free Library on Tuesday, February 18th at 6:00 PM. The library has nothing to do with it, I'm simply paying to rent one of the rooms. I invite and welcome all Bennington residents to attend. I think the meeting will take about an hour, but if citizens have lots of questions, I'll be happy to stay and answer all of them. It's unfortunate, it has gotten to the point in our town for the past several years, some officials and others have decided they really don't want Bennington residents to have a say in our town anymore. And I believe the only way that citizens can be involved and informed is if we start together as groups and start to get accurate information out to the public. So again, the meeting will be Tuesday, February 18th at 6:00 PM at the Bennington Free Library.
Nancy, February 18th is not, cannot be correct.
I'm sorry, April, April, thank you.
That's my birthday, and I know when that applies.
Next month, April 18th. And I know you won't answer my question, but I was concerned to read about the huge meeting at Bennington College last week about the town of Bennington. It appears many groups and organizations were invited, and the governor was there. I'm not aware that any notice was ever put out to the public, so that Bennington residents were encouraged and welcomed to attend this very important meeting about our town.
So it is on the agenda, actually under implementing Town Vision Project Alliance, so I will address that at that point.
But who put?
I will address it at that point.
But who put the meeting together? Was it on the town website? Was it ever announced?
Not a town meeting.
Was it about the town of Bennington?
Nancy, it's on the agenda? No, it was not a town meeting.
Was it about the town of Bennington?
Nancy, it was not a town meeting. So it's on the agenda, and we can get to it.
Yet another reason to come to the meeting on April 18th.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. So next up, we have public hearing notice. See the Jeanne application for Ben High housing, Shannon. I see you walking to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. So this is the public hearing for the Ben High application for Vermont Community Development Program funding, otherwise known as Community Development Block Grant funding. So this is something that for every application that comes forward, we have to do a public notice and a public hearing, as well as a select board resolution to apply. The way that these funds work is that they flow through the town, they're federal funds through housing and urban development, and they come to the state, to the Vermont Community Development Program, and then they flow to municipalities and then are sub-granted for HUD initiatives related to affordable housing, also addressing blight and other community development programs. So I think Ben High is all of the above, and this application is for the HALE Resources to apply, and I'm going to invite them up to tell you more.
So we're looking to apply for the Community Development Block Grant, and we'd appreciate your support, and I'd really just like to answer any questions that you might have regarding the application or our plans with the building.
Zach, could you just make sure that you identify? We know you very well, but could you identify yourself?
Yeah, Zach, HALE, HALE Resources.
Thank you. That's always helpful.
And John Hale, HALE Resources.
So we have, so we have a memo in here. I don't know if you want to have some proposals to apply for $100 in funds, which would use to accomplish the following activities: complete renovations and upgrades at Ben High. This building is the former building of Bennington High School and Middle School that closed in 2004. The building is currently vacant and is recorded on the National Historic Registry through the National Park Service. The building will be converted into a mixed-use residential and commercial space. All right. And so you're here to make sure that the select board is in agreement.
Yeah, and we need the resolution signed, so if there's any questions that you'd like to ask in order to feel comfortable signing it, then we're happy to answer them.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So first, select board, any questions? Present for John? No?
And I will mention that there'll be a grant agreement. So this is just allowing us to submit an application, but there'll be a lot more conversation about this as we get closer to signing that grant agreement.
Yeah, this does not guarantee that the application would be approved. It has to go in front of the board. The deadline to submit this is April 11th.
Yeah.
So we would submit that, and then there's a meeting in June for the board at ACCD, and they make the determination of what the best projects in the state are, and only one award can be given to a municipality. So, and we're the only applicants that have asked the town to do that for this round of grant applications.
Okay. Any community questions? Nancy, please, come on.
Somebody needs to clarify. Who is actually going to end up owning the Ben High? Will it be the people of Bennington, or will it be the Hales?
So Nancy, this is an application for, to apply for a grant or funding, and so there will be, the second meeting in April will be the Ben High, the next Ben High meeting. So the only, this is a public hearing on grant application or the ability to apply for this grant.
Okay. Well, I did talk to Zach about the grant and read the grant, and there was something I thought that Zach was going to bring up about the grant tonight that he didn't. I just want to go on record that nobody should be placed in the Ben High basement, and I hope that people don't go out and get money and grants to do that before there's a public discussion. I can understand wanting to utilize the space, but you cannot put people in the basement. If an emergency happens, you could not get the people out of the basement in five minutes, they would be trapped. So I'm disappointed that this wasn't brought up tonight, but I just want to make it clear, I don't think people should be in the Ben High basement, and I don't know if the grant money is going to go towards that.
Can I respond to that? Sure. Thank you, Nancy, for reminding me I have this great announcement, is that we're trying to put 66-spot childcare facility in the basement of what some would call garden apartments, I guess in the city, as Shannon would say. And so, because there are full windows, and it is a pretty nice space, if you can envision it, and we have gone to a place in Pittsfield, Mass, where the YMC actually has a childcare facility in this very similar space. So we've been trying to create housing to bring a workforce to Bennington, and another thing that I've learned from working with Bill is that also there is a need for childcare in the community, and so that has just been something we've been trying to pursue as well, and we're really excited about this new update to the project. So thank you, Nancy, for the reminder.
And I'd like to point out that, you know, there's requirements by code, sprinkler systems, means of egress. We wouldn't be able to put anybody in the basement if we could not meet those standards, and pulling permits and getting certificate of occupancies and all that is part of the project. So there'll be plenty of ways to get out of the basement, I can assure you of that.
And there are windows above grand, and so it's not truly a basement, but correct? It truly is a basement.
So remind folks is there were classrooms in that space for at least 50 years, if not since 1913.
Spanish class?
Yeah. So it's not like, it's not a dark and dingy basement, it's a place where kids learned for years, and so it'll be a place now where kids continue to learn, so.
And just that I'm clear, is what you said, John, this will only happen if all of the codes for egress and all the rest are met in that. So just for the record, that that's clear.
That is correct, and being a childcare, that it's a little more stringent than a residence, you know, so, or a commercial space. Because they're small children, there'll be requirements to get strollers out, and plenty of ways to get out of the building in certain areas, so. And it'll also be protected from other people coming in, which is important for childcare as well.
So, all right. So help us with the wording on what our motion should be for this.
I think I have something, but.
You're probably better than I am at the wording.
I would just, I would move that we approve the resolution to apply for the CDBG grant funding as described tonight.
Second?
Excellent. All right. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any additions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I don't have a care.
We should all sign this, this one.
All right. Great. Okay. So next up is implementing the Town Vision, and we have two things on the ballot. One is Project Alliance, which is the gap that Nancy spoke about earlier, and the other is just to remind that the portions of commissions are open, and we have 15 open seats, or 15 seats that are up for renewal or are open on eight different boards. So please, please engage, because that is part of meeting the Town Vision, is really getting as much of the community involved as we can. So on Project Alliance, there was a recent gathering, it was a week and a half ago, maybe, to address a number of these lucky issues, including subjectives to homelessness, mental health concerns, and uptick in violence. There've been a small group of state level and some local folks who have been part of the planning groups for that meeting. It was an invitation-only event, and, which was somewhat, I think, determined by the size of the room we were in in Kappa. There were probably more people from Bennington than there were from Bennington, but there were a lot of state folks there, there were people from other, from Rattler, Springfield, you know, a fair amount, a fair amount of Southern Vermont participation, even though the focus of the meeting was on Bennington. And it did bring together education, social service organizations, town government. We were well represented by Shannon Barsagio, who's Community Development Director, was part of the presentation. Zach Hale was part of the presentation, too, maybe. Lieutenant Brandy and Chief Doucette were also part of the presentation group. Stu Heard had a role in helping shape it, and largely it came out of some early meetings that the opioid response team sort of converged, maybe, because Jim Baker was involved in votes.
Well, it actually began when we were approached by Jen Morrison, Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety, and officials from the governor's office, seeking to come to Bennington, selected Bennington out of a number of towns that have shown up on what's called the heat map, which is a map that the state has developed that highlights communities that are in, we'll call it crisis, with regard to violence and drug issues. Bennington was selected, although we are only fifth on the map. We were selected because we have, through the opioid task force group, made great strides in Bennington in trying to address some of the issues that we face. And so the governor's office and the Department of Public Safety wanted to come to Bennington, meet with us, and pull together this summit that was hopefully to develop a leadership team and a way forward to help us decide what resources we need and how we might achieve them. So this was really a governor's office directive. The meeting was arranged by Colonel James Baker under contract with the governor's office, and as Jeanne has said, it was by invitation only.
Right. And it was, yes, so, because we forwarded the names to all the select board, assuming that we all know, and actually, Jeanne and I got the agenda of the 94 at 9:00 from Stu, so I'm not sure if we were truly invited, but we were there.
I'm not sure you were.
So there were discussions that utilized five focus areas: housing, education, police, lived experience slash recovery, and then also treatment. And there were action steps that came out of each of those groups, and I understood from Zach Hale that the governor, or me, that was from you, Jim, that the governor made the housing statement the next day in the legislature. Yeah, which is very cool. So it was an initial, it was an initial meeting.
It was working in the morning.
But the next steps are truly the full community. So each one of those five focus areas now has next steps to think about putting, implementing. And so the hope is that the community will be very involved. And so the hope is that the community will be very involved as we go forward. I don't know, there is a planning group, and that planning group is sort of in charge of moving us to the next step. So that will be public. And I did want to bring, everyone that came to the meeting was given a copy of this book called Bleeding Out by Thomas At, maybe, A T. I'm on page like twelve, so I can't recommend it, but it was highly recommended to us. So, um, you know, that's, that was our, I guess, our homework after, after the session. So, yeah.
I just want to make one comment. If I understood it correctly and if I didn't, let me know. It was my understanding that this was the first time that they've done this format and brought all these people into the same room to have these discussions. And the hope is that they'll use this model in other communities. We were sort of like the first community that were piloting this, this method of communication and presentation and action steps and so forth. So we need to get this right, so they can take it on the road and help other communities. So we're really, really lucky that they chose us to do this first, and I think we should be proud of that.
Could you list the five areas again slowly?
Yes, I can. Housing, education, police, lived experience slash recovery, and treatment. And I think between several of us, we did, Zach chaired the, or facilitated the housing discussion. Mar Boudreau facilitated the education one. I don't know who did the police.
I don't know either, I'm afraid.
I wasn't on that group.
Okay. Lived experience, recovery was Mar Day from Turning Point. And treatment was Todd? Todd.
Todd. Salveswald.
Salveswald, yes, okay.
Say your name wrong.
So those were the five areas and I don't, you know, and I think that it's because in totality, these are, had all the major points. So it was, it was an all-day session. It was good. Cat TV filmed it, so you can watch it. I think the only pieces that were not filmed were the breakout sessions where we sort of talked about issues. But the results from those breakout sessions were definitely on camera as well. All right, so from there, manager's report.
Thank you. And Jeannie, you've already took some of my thunder, which was not in my manager's report, but the boards and commissions that, seats that are open, we are hoping to hear from those people who are interested by May first, so that the board can do their appointments in, through the months of May and June. Generally, the board interviews new applicants, not necessarily incumbents who are interested. But please get your applications in if you're interested by May first.
Where are the vacancies?
Oh, my lord.
They're in all eight.
I don't have the list. I don't have the list.
Yeah, there is eight of the nine committees.
Yeah.
So at least, I think there are three on energy, there's one on C R because we have an open seat. There are several on D R P, two, like two or three, yeah. And then there's one, I think, one.
Housing Authority has an opening. I know the Board of Listers is the only one that doesn't have an opening at the present time.
Yeah, so you have your, you have your choice of boards that you want to be on. Please applaud them. Good.
Okay, now to the action items that I'm presenting to you tonight. We'll do this kind of in reverse order. The certificate of highway mileage is in your packet. This is normally presented to you in February of a given year. Unfortunately, we overlooked it and now I am presenting it to you. There were no changes in our highway mileage certificate. There were no additions, no new highways, no reclassified highways, no scenic highways created. So I'm looking for the board to, and I will circulate this original for signature, and that is all that you need to do. The town clerk will then confirm it and send it on to the state. So we are slightly tardy in getting that up to the state of Vermont. And that is the certificate upon which our highway mileage monies are based on. The second action item is a recreation center fee schedule update. And I titled this for twenty twenty-four and beyond. Over time, we have discussed putting the recreation center fees on some sort of a CPI, cost of living format, so that every year they rise slightly, rather than having them sit stagnant for a number of years and then they take this huge jump because we have to catch up with the, the costs of living which have passed us by. So we are proposing a new fee schedule for Bennington residents that is up approximately six to seven percent. Cost of living in, in September was eight point three. It is down to six percent, six point one as of February. So we've, we've stayed within that confine. And these rates are proposed to be in effect July one of the coming year, which is twenty twenty-three. And we would then look to February of a given year, indicate what the cost of living is, and announce the new ra, rates as of that time to take effect on July of the given, same given year. So this mechanism will allow the board to adopt this fee schedule, but also put it on a, a cost of living basis so that it rises slightly based on inflation every year, rather than us having to bring it back formally to you after stagnating for a number of years. So that is the proposal for you. And I'm looking for a motion to amend the recreation center fee schedule as shown.
Some of.
Great, any discussion?
I have, I have a question. When I look at the rates that you show, I see one that's for adult age twenty-five to ninety-nine. Says it's seven forty monthly, then it goes to nine?
That's correct. We, we looked at, we looked at that one very, with an eye to an eight percent increase and we rounded up. So yes, it goes from seven forty to nine dollars monthly.
And then the one below it?
The rest are all in, I think, the six, six to seven percent range. I believe they're closer, closer to six than seven, but they are all rounded to an even number.
Okay.
But that includes twenty-five to ninety-nine, and there is a single discount of ten percent on that, is that?
For the year.
Right. Oh, but rather than monthly?
Right, right.
It's a modest increase, and I do hate it when we have to jump the rates. What did it mean? Any other questions? Bruce, Sarah?
Nope. Nope.
We're in the discussion, discussion. Let's vote on this in favor of adopting this new fee schedule. Do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any suggestions?
Thank you. And just a couple of other notes. Bennington was successful in its planning grant application. The town has been awarded twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars approximately. I think it was actually one fifty-nine. But, you know, we're rounding that one up just a wee bit. So that, that will allow the planning commission to go forward with the next update on the town plan. And this is the inclusivity effort. Am I correct, Dan?
One of the one of the votes is police, the aye, of course.
Very good. And then the last is a piece of information. You'll be interested to know that the chlor, the pool is receiving such tremendous use that we're finding that the chlorine that we are automatically placing in the pool is being dissipated. And so we are proposing to install some UV sanitation efforts, which will allow the chlorine to, in a sense, reinvigorate itself. It'll break down chloramines, which are a byproduct of chlorine use that is not good. It causes skin irritation, eye irritation. So those will be broken down. I, I give a lot of credit to Mark Sawyer, who is our, our deputy public, building grounds, facilities director. This is at a cost of seven thousand dollars. We have the money in the budget and we will be proceeding. It is a very low consumption from an electrical perspective, but it's something that is much needed now that the pool is being so heavily used.
That's fantastic. So, so would UV still have to use chlorine?
Oh, yes, yes. We'll, the, the chlorine injection system will remain the same. And we have two certified pool operators on our staff. They check the chlorine every morning before the pool is open to ensure that it meets the standard that the state has. Because any, any public swimming hole or swimming pool must meet certain standards for chlorine. But what happens throughout the day is the chlorine dissipates because of the high use. And we don't want to continue to, continue to add chlorine because then that creates an abundance of chloramines and some of the other byproducts. This will help us potentially reduce some of the chlorine that we need to use, but will also reinvigorate the chlorine that is in the pool and make it a much safer place throughout the day. And that's all I have.
Between you and Jonah, I'm wondering, does, do we have a, a approximate date when construction will resume on Willow Park now that the weather's getting a little warmer?
The snow is dissolving.
We put out a Facebook post today with an update to the community on Willow Park. It's very much on all of our minds. We are going to be meeting with the project manager from our vendor next week, I believe Thursday at noon. And at that point, we're really hoping to nail him down in terms of that timing. Great question. Everyone in the community is asking or just thinking the same thing.
Thanks.
My grandson is anxious. Which means I'm anxious.
All right, so we're moving to other business. And I'm just thinking we should start off with a small thank, heartfelt thank you to Bruce. Yeah, to, um, so, I mean, because Bruce has been an amazingly engaged and active select board member. And I, you know, when I was just thinking about the areas where you've really had, um, real impact, certainly rethinking community policing and how, how the community and the police department work together. Energy policy is another area where I think you've been really instrumental. And your, your endless drumbeat of go vote of, you know, trying to get people to vote and, and just increased voter participation has been really stupendous. You know, and I think, you know, given this is your last meeting, you chose not to run again. We're making your last meeting mercifully short. I'm just saying. We are, it's not close to none yet.
It doesn't happen very often.
We did this on purpose. But it was just an opportunity for us to be able to let you know how much we have really appreciated everything that you've done, yes.
Yes, I agree with everything Jeannie said. And tonight, again, I don't know how we're going to do business because none of us can make motions the way you make motions. You're gonna have to like have a class or, you know, give us a quick tutorial on how to make motions. Because I don't even consider making a motion anymore. There's no reason to. So suddenly, we're all gonna be back in, back in the saddle to make motions.
I'll be watching.
So that's what I will miss the most is your, 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 your well-thought-out motions.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll miss you, Bruce. You were always a great sounding board for me. And I could call you and you'd give me a frank assessment of my harebrained idea. But, you know, we're not saying goodbye. We're, we're gonna see you and we're gonna hear from you.
All right, right?
Mm-hmm. Until then, I'll say, see you later.
Great.
Anyone else have any words for Bruce?
Yeah, it was.
It's a moment.
It, it was, it was an honor to serve with you. Your dedication to making the town of Bennington a better place is an example that I hope all of us will follow. And Mr. Woods, you have big shoes to fill. I'm confident you're gonna fill them, but it'll, it'll never be the same as the contribution that Bruce has made to this board. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say thank you for your service and I feel fortunate to be on the board while you've been here. Thank you.
As is my style, I'll thank Bruce personally, out, out of session.
That's, that's fine. Can I have a moment of privilege? Personal privilege? Thanks. It has been a, an honor and a privilege to be able to serve this board, first under an appointment situation and then elected. It is a privilege to serve the people of Bennington. I, I have two things I want to say about it. One is that the, it seems to me that we sometimes are, all too often, don't see what a wonderful place this is. We don't see that. And we don't say it to each other and we don't, particularly those of us who have been here longer. I find that the newcomers around us see it more. But may I just say, let's try to do better on that. Secondly, I chose not to run because I thought there would be wonderful people with new voices and new visions wanting to run for this board, and I was correct. And I feel good about that. The one thing I will say that I still do not feel good about, and I will continue to beat that drum, which is we cannot continue to operate a town where only two, um, what? Two thousand out of ninety-five hundred people vote. We have to do better than that. Oh, and, oh, there was a third, sorry. There's always a third, that, there has to be a third. A reminder to my friends in town, and that is, the select board, by constitution of the state of Vermont and by its traditions, the select board and the towns are not creatures of themselves. They are creatures that have been created by the legislature of the state of Vermont. Therefore, we are a board of limited powers. And when, my first question that ever came to me after being named to the board was, what was I going to do to put something into Kmart? To which I replied, I will do exactly for that property what I will do for your house. It's, both of them are private property. The select board has no say, none, of what, what can go on. We can do things when there is property that is available for us to purchase, to renovate, to partner, and to do things that this town desperately needs. Everyone needs to remember that. And in case this board forgets it, I will be sitting in the front pew to remind them that's the way it works. But it's been a privilege, it's been an honor serving with all of the members who have sat here. Thank you. We skipped upcoming agenda.
That's because, okay, all right.
Sorry.
Thank you. All right. So we started side. All right, well, okay, can we do any other business or was that enough business? And we'll go back to upcoming agenda.
Yeah, that's right. I have none.
I, I, yeah. You are, you have to go. Our own business. Okay, so upcoming agenda, what I think we know is that April tenth, yes, the organization, that we know.
That we know.
And we think the Bennington Sports Foundation is coming then. April twenty-fourth, in my presentation, yes, an update. And then sometime in May, maybe we have Chelsea Solar on the agenda again. Are there any other?
I think the Bike Hub, I don't know when, but I know they were interested in coming to do, should be, they're gonna want to do like a presentation, so we should save it for a lighter meeting.
Oh, and I think we told them to wait till we do it.
Yeah, and there's no hurry, I just know they're interested in coming and sharing what they're doing.
Do anything else?
I can't think of anything right now.
All right, all right, okay, so, we do have need of an executive session for contract, yeah, yeah, we do.
No, different than yours, but you need to come again.
Um, so, can I have a motion, we go into executive session?
I would move that we go into executive session with whatever guests that we need to invite along with.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Can you vote, there we go.
Yes.
Yes, just missed the answer.
CAT TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support CAT TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.